Welcome, everyone, here this afternoon for the Committee on Higher Education, Cultural Affairs, Public Libraries and Women's Affairs, who is conducting a public hearing on Bill Number 288-33, which is an act to adopt the rules and regulations for art in buildings, supported by the federal government and government funds in the territory of Guam and the percent for the arts enhancement grant program. It is April 8, 2016, at 3:40. I'd like to thank, of course, my colleagues who have joined me here this afternoon: the Vice Speaker, Benjamin Cruz, and our Legislative Secretary, Tina Rose Munia Barnes; the requirements of the law that we advertised this for five days and 24 hours in advance, that those were complied with by the committee. And so here we are this afternoon to then hear Bill 288. What this really is, is that the Kaha was tasked with putting rules and regulations together for the art in buildings and the 1% for the arts enhancement grant program. And in return, then, after complying with the law, that then they were supposed to submit and for review by the legislature, and of course, depending on the bill itself, that there could be several options, of course, looking at the rules and regulations in which the committee could return the rules for correction in accordance with the AAA process, we could amend the rules, of course. And lastly, of course, seek the advice of the Attorney General regarding the consistency of rules enabling statutes. So those are normally how rules and regulations can be dealt with. And hopefully, with our conversation today and testimonies today, that we would be able to make a decision on the rules and regs. So there are individuals who signed up to testify this afternoon. We have four chairs and about five individuals. Mr. Cameron from Kaha, Yun Suk Park, Hoso Pa'atautautano, and from Kaha and Galei, Monica Eileen Meno for Pa'atautautano, Monica Guzman for Kaha and Galei, and Francis Santos from GRMC. So we'll just add one more chair there, then. Okay? Can you guys please come forward and take a seat?
Do we have another? Okay. All right. So I guess if we get more individuals, then we'll have the second set of individuals who want to testify. Okay? So for now. But we're also going to have, there's somebody out there signing in as well, so that's why we're going to have to have a second set. I know I can't get all of you there. Oh, there you are, Monica Park. Are you going to testify, or are you just here for support? Are you going to speak?
Support.
Okay, support. Okay, I understand. So, okay, so here's the four. Let me see. Wait until I get, where's the other list of, can I get the list? One moment, until we get the list of those who've, yeah. Yes. Can I, yes, I'm sorry. Can I have, yes, because we're getting the list of who's signing up and Eileen? Who's, okay, so Pa'atautautano? Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry. And let me see, one. Okay. Well, Judy, maybe you can put a chair there on the side, next to Monica. Wait. No, no, because Polu, there's enough. I'm different. Then I'll call the second group. All right, then, we're going to go ahead and start then with Mr. Cameron. So with the mic that you have before you, it's a very powerful mic. It'll pick up, and you know, we need for you to, yes, press the button. If you see the red light, that means it's on. But please don't put it too close to you, primarily because it would muffle your voice, and then we won't be able to do the transcribing of your testimony, and other people will not be able to hear you as well. But close enough, but not too far away. And state your name, what agency or organization you're with, and state if you are in support or against, okay, the bill. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. You may start.
Half a day, Madam Speaker. Half a day, Madam Speaker. Half a day, Madam Speaker. Vice Speaker. Legislative Secretary. Did I get that correct? [laughing] Gahu si Joseph Artero Cameron. Gahu Presidente para i Departamento ni Kaha o Grenanci Moru. Gov Magotzun imatupaguni pa'be testigo. Ediesti e Bill Number 288-33. Za parabeau sangana loquen na uapata loqui otuna papit gisintatin i testimonio. Ni pro anuk na 37 aniustati distima tutuhu nestina programa. Za i gume luhi guina tempo, si Senadora Carmen Casper Bauer, si Senadora Nchilang Bamba, dan si Senadora Catherine Berdalu Agun. Gosmaulik sa nu matatsukzu maskiu na ora media, dan si former Senator Carmen Casper Bauer. Za asangan magaid hafa isi nintenda ni hafta nu malolofan sia giesti na programa. Za mangi magaid, amangi gi halu ma hafa sia intensyonya, hafa minagofnya ni pro mali'i mo'na, hafa sini mon ma pasa ni pro anuk. Pues anuka ta'lu i mas ot timuna pahina, hadi sia ma manbota, na senador hadi tima manbota. Lo zahu na pa'be o testigo na pa'be na halu ne, esti zo anuk ne. Si itautu sia ni uma'atan ginin sanhizo, tima ripapara na atman estina lay distima pasa. My name is Joseph Artero Cameron. I'm the President of the Department of Chumora Affairs that has administrative oversight for the Council of the Arts and Humanities. I am here in full support of Bill Number 288-33. I went ahead and provided documentation attached to my testimony to show that the actual law, Public Law 15-50, that was passed back on the 25th day of June of 1979, that's almost 37 years ago, that it shows that Carmen Casper Bauer, Chilang Bamba, and Catherine Agun, when they were senators, they moved this whole project when it was still under the insular of the arts out of the office of the governor, before it became a single-state agency such as the Council of the Arts and Humanities. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on Bill Number 288-33, an act to adopt the rules and regulations for arts in buildings supported by federal government and government funds in the territory of Guam. As the President of the Department of Chumora Affairs, the umbrella agency which oversees the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities, administrators of the percent for the arts program. I applaud the intent and positive effect this bill advocates. This bill seeks to not only increase the membership of the percent of the arts selection committee, but to expand the scope of the program's current rules and regulations. Currently, the program benefits primarily visual arts. Public arts, often underappreciated, enhances the aesthetics and landscape of our community and promotes a sense of place for our residents. Bill Number 288-33 further encapsulates artisans in all disciplines, special emphasis, "all disciplines," to include performance artists, writers, filmmakers, producers, musicians and crafters, et cetera, and allows them to avail of the program. The arts has the power to bridge differences, connecting individuals of different backgrounds through the shared experience of art, music, literature, dance, thus healing communities as well as individuals. This bill allows the development and implementation of programs in arts therapy, apprenticeships, et cetera, and allows art to be presented in written form through publications, visually through the creation of two- and three-dimensional work, and through expressions of song and dance. Through the percent of the arts program, the commissioning of bodies and practitioners in the field of arts and culture will enable these groups and individuals to become viable contributors to our island's social, cultural, and economic welfare. I commend this legislative body for recognizing the intrinsic value of this program. This is a great initiative that not only promotes creative expression, but it will improve the well-being and quality of life of the citizenry of Guam, and I encourage the passage of this legislation. Sijuzmaasi.
Welcome, Mr. Cameron. You've also, I guess, provided not just the bill, but there's the rules, but you had, and you highlighted?
We highlighted the new items.
Okay, so.
Those are only the new.
Okay, so you're not discussing any of these, then? You're just highlighting that these are all.
Just so that when you look at it, if you have any questions specific to the highlights, because everything else was status quo, but the council sat down in great length just to see what the enhancements could look like, so we highlighted that.
Well, my staff did the exact same thing as well, because we wanted to see the difference, so.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Half a day, Madam Speaker. Senor Vice Chairman and Senora Legislative Secretary, Tina Munia Barnes. Gahu si Eileen Meno, za hu represasenta i Pa'atautautano. Ga'gezu guini paguni parabay supporti esti na lay. Kosaki sini anu na'atan tati gitateku unli famagonta. Ginin esti sia na klasin cho'cho' za ni bida'n midu. Sini ha'mas ta na'doku isi midza guini gitanota. Kosaki lumala mo'na ikoturata za ni lengua hita, gi performing arts na pati. Pues hugaga ga'hamzun ni paru'n supporti esti ginaga'un kaha, ni paru ma pu'luzi programa para hami itautautano. Kosaki mas fit mi hit mo'na gi tempo. Esti dos met de si size megai sia matulalaka guini esti gitanota. Komuta cho'ui esti za ta'tano misi midza sempre mas met godi hit mo'na. Ti parahita esti na parahita maguan gi santa teku za ni manmamaila sia. Pues who, my name is Eileen Meno, and I'm here to support this request, to set aside funding to continue to support the request at hand, but especially the program that I'm most involved with, which is the performing arts, so that we can continue to nurture the seeds that we are planting in the hearts and in the minds of our children, so that we can affirm and strengthen who we are as a people as we go further here in our island. And if we continue to do that as a government agency, if we continue to do that, our people will continue to thrive. Sina maasi.
You're welcome.
Half a day, Speaker Juan Pat, Vice Speaker Cruz, and Legislative Secretary Senator Barnes. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony and support of Bill 288-33. My name is Monica Okada Guzman from the beautiful village of Mengilau. As an avid supporter of the arts and culture in Guam, I believe the percent of the arts and the arts in public buildings program is finally an acknowledgement that our island has the talent and the resources to enhance our buildings and our infrastructure. I would like to acknowledge the vision of then-Senator Carmen Casper Bauer, Cecilia Bamba, Catherine Agun, Franklin J. Kidogo, and Ramon Suru for first introducing the program through Public Law 15-50 in 1979. It was then amended 10 years later through Public Law 2027, introduced by Senator Elizabeth Areola, Jotie San Augustine, and Martha Roof. The current program was further enhanced through Public Law 31-118, introduced by Senator Aline Yamashita and all the members of the 31st Guam Legislature in 2011. Like Joseph Cameron said, the first one was 34 years ago, 37 years ago? And that's one of the, Guam was probably one of the first, is the first territory that has a percent of the arts program. 5 GCA Chapter 85 for Kaha states, "Citizens of Guam lack the opportunity to view, enjoy, or participate in living theatrical performances, musical concerts, operas, dance and ballet materials, art exhibits, examples of fine architecture, and the performing and fine arts. The territory desires to foster the opportunity for participation in arts and humanities programs designed to benefit citizens for all ages and from every community." Madam Speaker, the percent for the arts program provides the territory of Guam the ability to foster this. Bill 288-33 broadens the reach of the percent program to include other artistic disciplines like performing arts, community development projects, and artists and residents programs. The revised rules and regulations for art in public spaces, which is the framework for Bill 288-33, is the result of Kaha's experience in the last few years as they reinstituted the program that was left dormant for many years. It is gleaned from lessons learned. To give you a wider perspective of the percent programs across the nations, 28 states and territories have percent for the art programs, with Hawaii being the first to introduce this program in 1967, followed by Guam in 1979. Funding is mostly derived from state-funded capital improvement projects, while here, we also have the added dimension of the Qualifying Certificate Program, or QC. The recent agreement signed between the GRMC and GIDEA regarding QC compliance and the close collaboration Kaha shares with the GRMC, or Guam Regional Medical City, is a shining example of how we can use art in many other forms besides just two-dimensional art. I would like to state for the record that the Guam Regional Medical City has always been supportive in its responsibilities to be compliant, and I would like to acknowledge Margaret Bengzon and her team for leading their efforts in the percent program. While most naysayers would proffer that their hotels and facilities could not possibly house the art required through this program, we, as a community, need to broaden the definition of public art as art installed in public spaces. Public art is much more than that. It is fostering art appreciation, placemaking, cultural tourism, and so much more. The annual grant program funded by the National Endowment of the Arts provides an average of $150,000 annually. Through the percent program, grant opportunities can be increased for our community. The annual budget for Kaha is just a little over $500,000. This is clearly way below the percentage of what the Council of Pacific Arts and Culture would like to see in government budgets across the Pacific allocated just for the arts and culture. Many of our government offices display artwork that is part of the Art Bank inventory. The last purchase of art by Kaha was in the late 1990s. Would you not agree that we should update our inventory, have the ability to maintain the art, and continue to support our artists? Would you agree that our performing arts, literary arts, visual arts, and traditional arts continue to evolve, and that we, as a government, must support them and provide every opportunity for their engagement and development? I hope that you will kindly support the passage of Bill 288-33 as is, so we can support all of our artists across our community. Thank you, and sijuzmaasi.
Thank you very much, and. See, Francis Santos.
I'll refer to the written testimony.
Okay, so let me see, so. Judy Flores, yes, I have your written testimony.
Half a day, Madam Speaker, and Vice Chair Senator B.J. Cruz, and Senator Tina Munia Barnes, Secretary. My name is Judy Flores, and I'm testifying as a practicing artist, a folklorist of Chumora arts and culture. Having grown up and lived in Guam for almost 60 years, I'm testifying in favor of the bill. The percent for the art rules and regulations are the result of careful study and consideration by the Kaha staff and community professionals, who met several times as an ad hoc panel to ensure that the interests of Guam's artists were projected and protected, should be protected, and enhanced through this law. It was then reviewed and approved by the Board of Guam-Kaha. I hereby disclose that I currently serve on this board. The rules and regulations spell out the process whereby the percent for the arts law is carried out by various participating government agencies, so that builders are made aware of the 1% requirement from the time they first begin the building permit process at Department of Public Works, and from the first time they inquire at GIDEA about eligibility for tax exemption and qualifying certificates. The regulations also specify that the Director of Kaha must sign off on the occupancy permit. With the signing of these rules and regulations into law, these agencies have a clear responsibility and direction by which they are required to apprise any applicants of public or government buildings to be constructed. It is my opinion that the 1% of construction costs that will be spent for the arts is a small portion of the amount the building owner will save by not paying taxes on their business for up to 20 years. These taxes would normally be funds that our government could use for government services. Because these businesses will not be paying for government services to the community, the percent for the arts provides a way for them to give back to our island community. Furthermore, they will give back in ways that will benefit their businesses as well as provide for the development and sustainability of our artists. These regulations allow for the owner to beautify their property with local art. The regulations also expand the benefits to other art disciplines, so that the owner can offer their funds to pay for art performances, art workshops that encourage support and sustain our cultural practitioners, our young musicians, and other artists. By working together, the building owner and Kaha can create the quality of life every community aspires to achieve. Thank you.
You're welcome. Former Senator Frank Santos.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For the record, my name is Francis Santos. I'm speaking on behalf of the first qualifying certificate recipient to exercise this public law on 1% of the arts. I would like to say it was a long and arduous process, and I guess now that we have rules and regs before us, it should be an easier process for the next qualifying certificate, what do you call that, to be processed? Because it was a long process, to say the least, and I can sit here to the left of me, my fellow classmate, Mr. Cameron, that we, it took us a while to arrive at an agreement, but nonetheless, we're here. I want to thank Monica Guzman for the kind words. She was very instrumental in the formation of the program that we have up at GRMC. I can stand here very proud and see Judy did a testament of her mural that sits in the lobby of our hospital, that even to this day is just, is something to behold when you walk into the lobby of GRMC. Moving forward, I think, when I was asked to present this, I said, well, you know, I'm not, this is all after the fact for us now, and I think what we needed to do is provide sustainability for the arts. And I'm glad that the inclusion of the performing arts is there, because it's not only the pictures that are hanging in GRMC, and they're all beautiful, but I think what we want to do as part of the vision that Monica and Ms. Bengzon, and I think just the vision of GRMC, is to provide a little bit more. So I was sharing with B.J. earlier, my good friend, about what we can look for with the money that, this 1.3 that we've allocated or as part of our contribution back to the community. We have a wonderful publicly-owned performing arts center. It's called the Southern High School Auditorium. Our tax dollars, or I guess the federal government's tax dollars, just spent, and B.J. and I were trying to get the number, I thought it was between $2 and $3 million to restore. So earlier, I called Telling Tyte, and I asked Telling, "How much do you need to maintain the Southern High School Auditorium?" Because it's truly the only performing arts center on Guam. There's nothing like it. We pretend that we have something like it at UOG, but it's really not. That's truly a gem. The private ones are there. We have, you know, the Phoenix Center, of course. But if you want to talk about sustaining our investment, that's the Southern High School Auditorium. So I think what I'm going to do with the help of Monica is speak to the selection committee at GRMC and say, "Let's engage and look at supporting the performing arts, and not only advocating the NTT bowls and all those other groups that are out there, Pa'atautautano, but give them the facility that they need." Meaning, and we have something already. Our problem, which has always been the government's problem, is we can't maintain these facilities in the way that can continue to foster the programs that we're trying to promote. So I think moving forward, you're going to have the advocate, of course, behind you, as Francis Santos, saying, you know, "You want to get the benefits of the QC, that's all great, but give back to the community, like Judy said, for the non-taxes that you're going to pay." So this is a great thing. I'm kind of shocked, because 37 years ago, and I don't have the luxury of asking my dad, "So what happened? I mean, why did you vote no on something as, you know, as critical to the arts?" So, yeah, I was reminded by Monica, I said, "Well, you know, 1979, I can look at the date, June, I probably was not back here yet. I was still in school." But again, you know, for whatever wisdom my dad puts there, I can stand and say, "No, the Santos family, Francis, we want to support the arts, and we have a vehicle to do it now." So I stand in support of the group that's here before us, and I will announce that on April 15, GRMC will make its first donation as part of our contribution of $100,000 to, you know, to the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also had received a letter of support from Reyna Calvo. And let's see, I think that's the only one, yeah, I will. I just want to make sure, first of all, that I get all the testimonies before I call even the next group, but, and before we release you. Normally, then, we'll, I would ask the senators here if they have any questions or comments, so I'll go ahead and open it up then, so. Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, because as I look at the copy that has highlights, I'm trying to figure out where in the rules would it allow for a contribution or for us being able to do what Senator Santos is suggesting? I don't see anything in the rules as currently written that would allow, maybe not GRMC, but say, GWA decides to build the $160 million wastewater treatment. If you demand the $1.6 million from that, could that 1.6? I mean, sure, you're not going to think that we're going to put art into the sewage treatment plant. It would seem to me that if we're going to encourage the arts, that we've got to think outside the box of what these rules are, and maybe you might on your own want to take this back and expand on it, because we've got to stop and think about this. Because shouldn't GWA put the 1.6 with their 1.3 into an endowment fund that would make sure that? that would make sure that Southern High School gets the $150,000 a year that it needs to keep that place running? And if it needs to make a capital investment, like $300,000 to replace the air conditioning system, that it can? Or are we going to let it falter, fail, and we have the same problem that we had a couple of years ago where it was mold ridden and we couldn't go into it? And we had to invest millions and millions of dollars to bring a brand-new building back into operations? It would seem to me that that is supporting the arts because you're gone to, you're going to have to try to figure out whether or not, how these things are going to be done. I know I got calls from Gura. They were asking, "Are we supposed to, if we build Gura 506, are we supposed to put art in that area? Or can we, can the 1% go someplace else for operation somewhere?" I mean, yes, I think you probably could and should put some art there. But if they spend sixty million, you know, how much art could you put up and around sculpture and things? Could there be a better use of the money that you're getting? I know you have listed what you can use the funds for and what you can't use the funds for, and it seems to me that the what you can use the funds for isn't broad enough to be able to address these kinds of things that we are now starting to see that are important. I mean, no offense, and I'll probably get killed for this, but it doesn't even include what you want, really want that $1.3 million for. There's nothing in here that says you can use that funds for. But I'm just saying, you've got to expand this to be able to do things outside the box that would support it. We all, we've all talked about the fact that the one thing that's missing in the schools is a music program. I don't know how many, annually, I get letters from each of the schools. Can you donate so we can buy new band equipment? So I mean, all those kinds of things. I keep trying to figure out how we can be a little more creative with the, and I know it's not that I'm saying I don't want to support the artists that are making the money for the pieces of arts that go in it, but I think we've got to expand the definition of art. And I think, Monica, you mentioned that there is an expanded definition, but I just don't see it in the rules that it can be handled that way, that we can start spending money this way. Yeah.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. I think in the agreement that was signed by GIDEA and the GRMC, there was types of two ways that they can be compliant. And I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of that agreement, but perhaps in future agreements, I think perhaps--
More importantly, even if you don't have your agreement with GRMC, in the rules that you have here, point out to me where it's listed as it can be funds.
It's not. There's nothing in the existing rules that talks about maintenance of buildings.
You added maintenance of art productions.
Of art pieces.
Art pieces, but nothing about maintaining a theater.
Is that really a, is that really something that, and I'm probably going to get slammed for saying this, but is, should that be a function of the percent program to maintain public buildings?
If it's going to encourage the arts. We can't decide we're not going to do it, let it fail, and you'll have no place to have any of the performances.
Okay, so--
So do, should we not plan for that and have some way of, instead of taking the 1.6 and putting a whole series of fountains and sculpture around the new wastewater facility up north, shouldn't that money be taken and be utilized elsewhere to expand and protect a place that we can? I mean, the symphony has no place to perform. And so I'm just saying.
Come on, I, look, our agreement, Madam Speaker, and Vice Speaker Cruz, and Senator Barnes, was a little bit more visionary. I think Ms. Bingzong, when we were sitting down trying to figure this out, was that we just can't give 1.3 million just because we need to fund Festival for the Arts. It just doesn't work for us. It was never the vision of that group that put this thing all together. And that's why when, you know, we were negotiating this, it's, "Well, we want to split this up. It's got to be just more than that." It's just, you know, and I don't think any other corporation that's going out there to come invest in Guam is just one that's going to hand over that thing. They're going to want their legacy to go with this. So I think, I'm a little bit concerned, Vice Speaker Cruz, I'm not sure that we can use 1.6 million in the wastewater stuff, but we need to check that. It is a public building. So I, you know, that particular fund you're talking about--
And there is no, there's no exemption for that. Okay?
I stand corrected, yeah.
There's no exemption for it. There is, however, and I know, and Senator Barnes might back me up on this, Gura has sent down a federal provision that says that money can't be-- you can't take any money additional for other things. So there may be an exemption for the federal money and maybe the 160. It being a DOD fund, we won't be able to take the 1.6 out of there, the 1%.
Correct.
Okay? So maybe, I don't know. Because until that's resolved, we can, under the current statute, GWA is going to have to put aside 1.6 in the same way that you did for the Gloria Nelson.
Well, I can speak, that's already being done.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, CCU understood its responsibility in that, and it did a beautiful job. I mean, that's better than any museum on island collection that you guys have up there. But I'm just saying, when we get to things where there are infrastructure things like that or a rebuilding of forty-five million for the renovations at Cabras Two, there needs to be an exemption, and I'm telling you, the Gura is asking for it, and I think the utilities are going to have to ask for it at some point, there's, but I think it might be more palatable to leave, to not provide an exemption for at least government funds if we can find other places to be able to utilize the money. That one point, that 1% would go somewhere else to maintain something that would assure the continuation of art, whether it's the Southern High School Auditorium or whether it's buying gym, band equipment for all the schools or costumes for the dancers, whatever.
Vice Speaker, if you're looking for an exemption for something like the Guam Water Works, in the actual law, because what we're looking at is just the rules and regulations, in the actual law, it does say that there is an exemption for utility buildings, you know, water wells and stuff like that. But if you're going to build, and that was the discussion with the CCU initially, where at first they thought they were exempted because it was a utility building, but in the actual law, there is an exemption for utility buildings, which is like the, what do you call those? The power plant and that kind of stuff. So there is that exemption. But I think you bring up, and Francis brings up, former Senator Santos brings up a good point in, as far as like Southern High. And I think perhaps, you know, there can be some kind of a way that we can dedicate some of this, but I would suggest that maybe we can probably, as we did in developing this, maybe we can sit down as a committee and come up with some way we can do, we can, I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure how to do this, but I'm sure if we get the right minds in the same room, we can come up with some kind of solution. Because I agree, I mean, you know, the theater, I mean, the Southern High, what do you call it? The theater. The theater is beautiful, and, you know, I'm sure the principal down there has challenged on how to maintain it and the funds to maintain it. You know, the University of Guam, the Fine Arts Theater, the same thing up there, you know? Those facilities that support artistic endeavors. And I don't have any problem with coming up with some kind of percentage or something. I mean, not to go out and use these funds to support it, support its maintenance 100% because you're still, it's still the responsibility of the owner, whether it's DOE or UOG to maintain it. But with the way things are today, you know, maybe some of this money can be used towards it. But what I would like, if it's okay, is just to focus on what we have today, and then perhaps if we get the right minds in the same room to come up with some kind of solution, then I'm sure we can all agree on something that would work.
And it's been, it took ten years to get these four lines in these two pages.
But we can work faster than that, your honor.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to add on Vice Speaker Cruz's comments. I came to this hearing today because I had some concerns that came, and Vice Speaker had mentioned it, and it was about Gura's interpretation of what could be a part of the 1% set aside for the arts. The other thing that came to mind, and I think it's really important that all of you guys here that are listening, that the Guam Economic Development Authority had come down with some concern, saying that this bill may need to be repealed because that, you know, giving that, even setting aside 1% for all these arts is not conducive to advocating for what the mission mandates are for the government and the facilities moving forward. And I said, I think I spoke to you as Kaha, saying, "I disagree with you, and I'll fight you tooth and nail, and I'll bring the Speaker, the Vice Speaker, and everybody else on this." My take is, we did have a provision just recently, Public Law 3305, that talked about the 1% of the arts and doing, having a sunset provision to give for, and it was a notwithstanding provision for the Festival of the Arts because we knew that it was a Guam thing. And those that would, those that would benefit from the funds being done was the artisans and the disciplines itself, whether it be the arts, whether it be literary arts, visual arts, dancing performance, and music, that all of you would have the opportunity to apply through a grant, through Kaha, but it would go through that channel. And I know that that probably wasn't questioned in any of this, but I'm really concerned because I, for one, I want to protect it. I want to support it, but I want to make sure that I put the amendments in and be able to address your concern, Senator Santos, about giving it to a program to sustain or a facility to sustain that. And that, if that goes in here or in another bill, I think it's really important. I do think that there are bigger things that we need to duck out because there are other government entities saying, "You don't need to put it in, and you need to do it. You need to find out if that's a true statement or not." Because I did tell Gura, and I did share it with GIDEA, if you have that provision that says the 1% and we're exempted from that, like the way the utility, the wastewater and all those underground infrastructures exempt it, then show it to me in writing that the feds say that. Because as we talked about, and as the chair on Kaha at the time shared with me, she said, "No, even Hawaii has it. So many states have it. So show me the provision from the federal contract that says that they can't take the 1% from the permitting process to do this." So, Madam Chair, that's a really big concern for me. And until I get anything in writing, I want to make sure that I try and support this. But knowing that there were other laws that were put in place temporarily that has a sunset provision to get the grant funding that I thought we were going to get assistance for to run the Festival of the Arts. Just had to bring it up for the record.
Well, we surely don't want to sound, of course, that we're not in support of this when you hear the comments, you know--
We are in support.
--by my colleagues here. Because, you know, as you noticed, even the previous legislature, when this was passed, it was passed unanimously. But, you know, I do have some things that I want to share with you just in the analysis of the rules and regulations that would actually then, would mean decisions have to be made as a result of that. And if I may, that the, in the analysis is that the rules and regulations do not appear to be in compliance with the administrative adjudication law, that Kaha's transmittal of the rules and regulations includes a letter from the acting director of the Department of Administration approving the rules. However, there is no letter from the compiler of laws or the Attorney General approving the rules as to form or otherwise as required by 5GCA Section 9303. Legislative Council in its analysis also recommends that there are several things that has to be done, and that's why I'm saying we need to discuss this, is to return the rules by the Oversight Committee to the Agency for Correction in accordance with the AAA process. I know the Vice Speaker and I were talking about possibly amending, but to amend, and I will demonstrate later throughout the rules where there's a lot of inconsistencies. And so that's the primary thing. The other is that there are many inconsistencies in the rules and the enabling statute, some of which, of course, which is all, section by section, we can show you where that is. The other is that the rules also go beyond the scope of the enabling legislation and conflict with it by including definitions that are not contemplated by law, revising the makeup of the selection committee, utilizing funds for administration costs, misinterpreting the duties of the director, allowing expenditures not contemplated by the law, and unlawfully imposing civil sanctions for violation of the regulations. So in essence, what you've done here is that you are like writing the law by making these rules and regs the law, and you're going beyond what the statute actually calls for. The rules and regulations are designed for you to set the parameters only in terms, really, of guidelines for the use of the money, but not to go and change the law. So if there, and so are there many areas in which you would like to basically change the law? And if that's the case, then we need to go back to the law to amend the law. It is not part of the rules and regulations. And I know that, and I'm glad that Joseph, your team, had actually put in the regulations, you highlighted what the changes are. Because in essence, what you've done is you've actually taken the law and made it a part of your rules and regulations, and then you added some of the changes, you know, that you wanted to provide. So as much, we were just, and I was just having this discussion with my staff because I'm going to call session at the end of the month, and by proceeding with the requirements of the ninety days is that we would not be able to meet it in the May session. It would be afterwards, actually, the ninetieth day would be the day in May that we're calling session, and we would be beyond that. And for us to rush now for the April session will not be able to incorporate some of the discussions that, you know, is taking place, suggestion by, you know, Francis Santos, by the Vice Speaker, and of course, some of the stumbling blocks that Senator Munya Barnes, you know, is hearing. We can't do that in two weeks. And that's why I know the Vice Speaker had, you know, mentioned that, and it's also the recommendation of legal counsel that, you know, we return it to you and work with you on this to strengthen it and to make sure that it is within the rules and regs and not necessarily impinging on local statutes, public law. And/or, and which I don't want to do, is that I don't want to make a recommendation based on a lot of inconsistencies. And all that we can amend is that to amend, to recommend to the legislature to reject. That's not what we want because it's a viable program. That's not what we want, because it's a viable program, and, you know, and of course, when you really think outside the box, how really something like this can be so advantageous for a lot of the arts in the community. Like, for example, I'm looking at Pa Tauta Tautano, and then I look at all our Chomor language teachers who start these dances, you know, teach these dances and the songs, and yet, nothing is being used to support them to continue what it is that they do, and we all say, you know, Ms. Menou, you said that it's going to be for our children, and that's where we're teaching our children. And I know many of you actually go out and buy, you know, on your own dollar, of course, you know, to make your own, you know, dance outfits, and nobody's supporting that as well, and that's what the Vice Speaker was saying. Could some of this also go to support, you know, your groups as well, or the different groups? So, you're not going to get any argument from us up here, but we want this to work. We don't want this to be rejected, where the AG is going to say that, you know, it's so inconsistent, it's in violation of the local laws, and so I'd rather that, you know, we will have that conversation when we're done here as to what route then we're going to go. Okay? Do you have any other comments or questions? I don't want to, of course, you know, not hear from the others. I still would like to hear from the others who did sign in.
Vice Speaker, can I ask you something on eligibility, please? Because based on what was proposed out there, the eligibility...
Okay, go ahead. But I mean...
Madam Chair, I just wanted to question, based on the rules and regs, the eligibility portion on Chapter 7 says that the organizations and individuals that can qualify, the application as an organization, it must be registered with GovGuam as a nonprofit organization or be a bona fide Guam school program sanctioned by the school's principal and endorsed by the Director of Education, School Master, Superintendent of Parochial Schools, and then organizations that apply for grant must be in compliance with all the applicable laws and regulations. And then under individuals, it must be, he or she must be a resident of Guam. If the applicant is an individual under 18, then their parent or guardian will be able to apply on behalf of the minor, and that's the criteria. I was saying that this would be the only grounds. I mean, I see the grant portion there, so I just wanted to make sure that if we needed to expand the opportunities for other groups, that that be included. Because it just says nonprofits or school programs. And not the school theater or not.
All right, so I'm going to have to make room for Xena Ruiz, and Mark Tyerin, and Jeremy Arx, if you'd like to testify. I'll go look in the lago. Here.
To support.
Oh, to support, oh, okay, all right. Is there anybody else? No, it's support also. Okay, do you have any more? All right, so it's...
Madam Speaker, again, just for clarification for all the folks that are here today, the intent of the 1% set-aside was duly intended for the artisans, the performing arts, visual arts, literary arts, and I want to make sure that in our efforts of moving forward, that it stay within that program, and that any, I'd like to hear from the government, the agencies that are saying that there are exemptions out there, to show me in writing, and to also follow through on the agencies saying that this should be repealed, because it doesn't make sense. I think it makes sense, because with our efforts to promoting, advocating, and preserving our Chomor heritage, our culture, and who we are as an island people, we need programs like this. We need to be able to showcase what our people do, what our island people do, and that this program was one way 39 years ago that would make it happen for all of you out there. So, I stand committed on that, Madam Speaker, but it's important to know that you're right, there's some amendments that really need to be changed or looked at through the board process and seeing if there's a quorum to move on on that with Kaha.
Yeah, thank you. I did not, of course, read the other letter of support, but in essence, is that when you think about thinking outside the box, that this testimony that is provided is that to also consider not just when we think of the visual arts, the dance-song poetry, but there's also the healing arts, you know, like creativity is health. So, it's really thinking now beyond what we normally think when we think of, you know, the arts. So, and this is also entered then as testimony. So, I like to, for a moment, I mean, at least for now, I like to keep it open so that we can have this conversation with, you know, the stakeholders, all those of you who testified, and then, and we want to do this as soon as we can. I mean, like next week, we don't want to delay, and really see what we can do. We will try first with working with you to do whatever the amendments would be, take out what is in conflict with the law, and then we can talk about the amending of the law in a totally separate, you know, bill, and maybe put something still together to be able to move forward, but it's got to be, we're going to have to be working on this almost on a daily basis, so. So, with that, at least, we can say that Bill 288 has been heard, and I thank all of you who, you know, have made your, and presented your testimonies today. We're going to keep it open for others who are in the watching audience who would like to send additional comments and maybe provide and help think outside the box to let us know what those are. So, we're going to keep it open, and you can fax it to my office at 472-3589. You can actually deliver it. I prefer you deliver, don't mail it, because we're really going to work on this starting Monday to 155 Hessler Street. You can either drop it in the mailbox or drop it at, you know, my office, or you can email Frank Torres, so it's fbtorres@judywannpat.com. So, with that then, I'm going to then declare this bill being heard and adjourn at 4:44. Thank you very much.